Let's take quick attendance.
Thank you. I think everybody else is having troubles too.
You're not muted, so. Woody?
Yeah. Here, I.
Here, okay. Lee?
Hi. Here.
There. Charlie?
Here.
Dave McMorris here, Matt?
Here.
All right, we're all here and present. The first item of business tonight is a used special permit and special permit for eighty-two Border Street. The applicant is Co-Lopster LLC. I know Adam Brodsky is here to present. I don't know who else is joining him, but if you could promote them, Julia.
Yep, Adam is coming up now.
Evening, Adam.
Good evening, Chair McMorris. Good evening, everyone. Could you please promote Aiman Omara, Susan Holley, and Karina Martinez, and Deborah Keller, and Caroline Reese from Merrill?
Would you mind repeating those names?
Yes, Aiman Omara is the project manager.
Okay.
I see Susan and Karina are on, and Deb Keller and Caroline Reese from Merrill Engineering.
Okay. Caroline is coming up, and what was Deb's last name?
Deborah Keller. She may be at another hearing and will join us shortly. I just, if you see her, perhaps you would be able to promote her, please?
Dave, we may have town council as well in the wings.
Caroline is going to join us later on in the meeting.
Okay.
I see a Deb Novoline.
So I see Deb Keller is with Caroline in the same screen. Thank you.
All right, do we have everyone now, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I know that we had an application for our August meeting that was continued till September. I know that there had been some more submissions since then. This is kind of a complicated project with a lot going on, so I do appreciate the letter that you sent. I think it was very helpful as an orientation to the project, but if you could give us a run-through of it, I think it would be helpful for everyone.
Thank you, Chair McMorris. With your permission, I'll introduce the team, then give you a brief overview with an emphasis on zoning relief, and then turn it over to Susan and Karina to go through the existing and proposed building conditions, and then turn it over to Caroline and Deb Keller for the site plan. So as you know, I represent the applicant Co-Lopster LLC, which owns the former Mill River Boatyard at eighty-two Border Street. Tom Sullivan is the manager of the LLC. Aiman Omara is the project manager. Susan Holley and Karina Martinez are the project architects, and Deb Keller and Caroline Reese are the professional engineers with Merrill Engineering. I do know that we have Nino DiNuno from KD Custom in the audience. If we need him, he is going to be the general contractor for the project. I'll provide, as I indicated, a quick overview, and then I'm going to ask Aiman to really explain the project vision, and then we'll turn it over to the professionals. As you know better than me, this is an historic boatyard with four existing buildings located within the waterfront business district on Cohasset Harbor. The property is located within various FEMA AE and VE flood zones. The project is also located within the Town Floodplain and Watershed Protection District. The lot is conforming, but the four existing buildings are non-conforming in different respects. There's a large metal storage building, which is non-conforming with respect to front and side yards. There's what we refer to as the gatehouse building, and Susan and Karina will explain this in more detail to you, where the former lobster pound used to be adjacent to the street. That's non-conforming and within the front yard setback. And what we call the main end, as well as the Eastwick Building, of the two larger buildings to the east of the site. Eastwick Building is where they apparently filmed The Witches of Eastwick, so that we refer to it as the Eastwick Building. Those buildings are non-conforming with respect to building height. All of the buildings are non-conforming with respect to compliance with the State Building Code flood construction requirements. In sum, we're proposing to change the use of the property to a small boutique hotel, which is a transient lodging use under the current zoning code, which requires a special permit. There will be a total of eight rooms, which require eight parking spaces under the zoning code. We are in fact, and Deb and Caroline will speak to this, providing a total of nine parking spaces with one additional parking space for the intended full-time manager of the hotel. The existing large boat storage building is going to be razed and essentially reconstructed with a smaller building that's intentionally being relocated further from the shoreline to promote flood resiliency, and as I'll explain, is to provide public access to the property, which doesn't doesn't presently exist. This will eliminate a non-conforming structure, create a new non-conforming structure that will conform both with zoning and building code flood-resistant construction requirements. That building will be elevated above the designed flood elevation with one hotel room and three parking spaces below. As I suggested, what this does is allow us to open up the shoreline, so we can provide a continuous public walkway along the shoreline and public access to the site, which doesn't presently exist. Similar but different to the new harbor walk that was recently opened for the condominium projects on the harbor on Elm Street. But we're creating public access where public access doesn't presently exist as a practical purpose. The existing gatehouse, again, where the lobster pound used to be located, is going to be renovated with a small addition, and that's going to be used for the property manager. That aspect of the project is designed to not result in a substantial improvement, so we're not making it flood-compliant, but we are going to improve its resiliency by adding flood vents to that building. The main in-building and the Eastwick Building and the associated decks, which are pile-supported, are proposed to be elevated in place and raised in height, again, above the designed flood elevation for flood resiliency. That interior space will be converted to the remaining hotel rooms. This site is clearly prone to flooding, and in order to mitigate that flooding, elevate the parking, so the parking is not subject to flooding, and also to ensure safe access from Border Street, we're proposing to construct a small retaining wall essentially parallel to the existing bulkhead and filling a portion of the property. As part of that work, we will be removing the abandoned Marine Railway, filling a portion of the railway pit, and repairing the existing bulkhead. So the zoning relief that we believe that we need is a special permit for the use under Section three hundred fifteen, a special permit for alteration and reconstruction of the existing buildings under Section three hundred eight point three A, and a special permit for work within the Town Floodplain under Section three hundred dash nine eleven, which includes, again, the new building that's replacing the existing boat storage building, elevation of the existing in-b buildings and decks on their existing pilings, and construction of the retaining wall and fill. As you know, the property is completely developed, and this project will result in a reduction of ground area coverage by a little over two thousand square feet. Just with respect to our other permitting, we have filed a notice of intent for the project with the Conservation Commission. This will be reviewed by the planning board for site plan review. The project will require a Chapter ninety-one license. There are a series of existing licenses for the property. We'll either be amending those or getting a new license after consultation with Mass DEP, and the project likely triggers the filing of an ENF with MIPA. So that was supposed to be a short summary. There's a lot going on, so let me turn it over to Aiman, if I might, just for a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. It's great to be with the board again. My name is Aiman Omara, project manager, as Adam mentioned, for Tom Sullivan, the owner, who's present, I think, and listening. As you can understand, this is a very complex project. We worked successfully with you on Cohasset Wharf and worked through a host of, again, series of complexities and layers and challenges, and we worked together to come up with a great solution there, and an outcome in that project is underway. The same best-in-class team that's on that project is doing this project, and really, this is a continuation of that. This project is a complementary use to Cohasset Wharf, and what you'll see in the plans is really a connection now, that the captain's walk truly, you know, penetrating into Cohasset Wharf, and then the new routes that will go through the Eastwick Inn. So our objectives really with this were to improve accessibility for pedestrians and the public, and you'll really see that in the graphics, to also improve sustainability for the buildings long-term, and of course, also to create attractive lodging for the harbor. Tom's vision for this property was very clear at the beginning, and what you'll see tonight really is the better part of three years of work to get to this point for this particular Project Eastwick Inn. And, you know, I want to get right to the drawings, and what you'll probably see first is the layers that are on this site are so complex, and what we've come up with, we think, is a really elegant solution to that, that really checks every box. So it took a long time to get to this point. We successfully worked with you before to understand those pieces that we need. We think we have a solution that really does everything and greatly improves the site, so I want to hand it over to Susan, I think, is next, which we followed by Merrill. And we're going to get into sort of the overview architecturally to see the vision expressed by the architectural drawings, but then supported really by the technical work at Merrill, and that's where you'll start to see those layers of complexity. So let's just roll up our sleeves and work together like we did in Cohasset Wharf, and we'll get this one set up, because we're looking forward to proceeding with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Yes, sir. I think Susan, can Susan share a screen, please?
Can you all see an image?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, thank you very much for having us tonight, and thank you, Aiman, for the tea up, for us and the board. We, as Aiman described, this is a very multi-layered project with a lot of complexity, so we've done our best to create a presentation that's crystal clear. In order to do that tonight, we decided to show a short preamble that we thought would be informative to the board. You'll see that it says Planning Board Submission eighteenth of September. This was actually prepared for the planning board, but since it was sort of just hot off the press, and it has some renderings that we think are pretty informative and helpful to understand, we're showing you a preview of that book, and then we'll get into the drawings that are proprietary to the zoning board application. So this drawing that you're looking at right now is, it's just to get a flavor of what we're trying to accomplish. In the rendering, you can hear, you can see that it is a stucco building with post-guard red roofs. Contents of our planning document showed that we were cognizant of the history of the site, and we can go back and go into that more if you'd like. We think tonight, though, the real action lies with the fact that we believe that from zoning bylaw point of view, we are improving the site. This is, this is a, it's about a month old, which was taken by drone in the exact orientation that we saw the previous rendering, which is here. What you see is, what you see here now are the existing conditions. Right now, you see the very large existing boathouse building, the railway cutting into the site, which is in just a worse repair than the way that this drawing might depict it. There is a shed and a very tall fence along the edge of Border Street. The existing gatehouse building, the existing main in-building, and the existing Eastwick Building are shown here as they exist today. And this is what we're proposing. As you can see on the, on the left of the screen, there on the, to the west, is a smaller building that would replace the large lobster pound building that's there now. The other buildings, the-
The lobster pound building or the boathouse building?
The boathouse building.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, and then on the, when more eastward, you have the main building, obviously, and the what we're calling the Eastwick Building and the gatehouse. This is the NOLI plan of the first floor plan on the engineering drawing. You can see that we have our new building supported by driven piled piers. We have a turnaround that Caroline will describe in more detail that comes into the building and back out. This is one of the strategies that we're using to build this Swiss watch on this site, which is to use every available inch for parking in order to be compliant. In the main building on the very first floor, obviously, we have parking on the first floor of the boathouse, but the, the main building has a lobby and a lounge and some great facilities of accommodation that allow anyone in the public to just walk right up to the building and right through it to the existing deck. The Eastwick Inn, which is the building that's closer to the bridge, as most people know it, and has if you just scroll up a little bit, so I can get that out of the toolbar. Very good. Yep. It has room ten, which is an en suite room, and we've got the emergency pedestrian access running through the buildings there. The first floor of the gatehouse has maintenance, utility, and storage, and the sprinkler room is there, and we don't plan on changing the elevation of that building. And again, Caroline will pull all the grade changes together for us when she describes the site in more detail. Next. So this gets into our ZBA submission, now that we've done our planning board preparation preamble. We are looking at, if you could zoom into this. The main inn represents a, or actually, Karina, could you go through these? Hi, so this, this sheet, again, represents our building calculations, and we've gone through and calculated the existing structure that's non-conforming versus the proposed structure that's non-conforming, and then along with its percentage changes. And this is what's represented in the main building along this last column here. And then, again, we have the Eastwick calculations over here. Again, existing structure that's non-conforming, proposed structure that's the additional non-conforming, and then the percentage change in the last column. So we show this for each building, and it's the three buildings that are non-compliant. The new building that replaces the boathouse is in full compliance. And then we have an area schedule that gives the gross area of each building on the site. And if you have any questions, we'll just continue on to the other sheets. So these are the existing plans of each one of the buildings, okay? This is the gatehouse. It's going, it's right up against the road. Five hundred and seventy-eight square feet of level two is non-compliant, and five hundred and seventy-six square feet is non-compliant on level one. These are the elevations of that same building, shown in, where the non-conformities, existing non-conformities are shown in yellow. So these are the Eastwick Inn existing plans. And the relief that we seek today is the raising of the structures. It represents a addition of thirteen square feet on the east elevation, or sorry, the north elevation, ninety-seven square feet on the west elevation, thirteen square feet on the south elevation, on the east elevation, we are seeking relief for ninety-seven square feet of facade elevation.
May I interject a question here? The additional non-conformities you've heard, are they all as the result of raising the building?
Yes.
Yes, you're not actually changing the envelope of the structure at all?
Exactly, no. It's raising the building. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so these are the existing, the existing plans of the main inn. Skip you over the plans. Here's the non-conforming height area that we are requesting. Twenty-three square feet on the north, two hundred square feet on the west, twenty-three square feet on the south, two hundred square feet on the east. And here is the existing boathouse, which is, which is proposed for removal. There is calculations. No calculations because of its removal, but here it is. Everyone knows. And then at the same scale as our proposal, we are proposing that on the level one plan, that will be a utility area, and in the setback, in the setback line, we are proposing to rebuild the, or to add the staircase that's shown here. And then on the level two, on level two, you also have the staircase and a small expansion for a bay, which then becomes the tower, that Karina is showing on the roof plan, which is actually in compliance. We are seeking relief for this little sliver to make this very small window dormer work. I also want to add to this plan, over here on the gatehouse, level one, facing Border Street, there's existing stairs, and we are removing these stairs, right? And which is why we're adding them on the backside, and and now they're in compliance, and we're making for a safer condition along Border Street. These are the elevations. The proposed addition is shown in red, obviously, and the proposed area in setback is shown in yellow, and Karina will show you what that is. That is the only piece of the gatehouse that is in the setback that we're proposing.
And that currently exists in setback?
That's correct, Chair McMorris.
Okay.
Okay, and so these are the western north elevations of the Eastwick Inn, or the Eastwick Building. Again, you know, we're showing non-conforming height area on the west, and we are proposing twenty-eight square feet. And here are the other elevations, the south and the east, showing the one fifty-five and twenty-eight square feet additions respectively. Here are the proposed plans. And then it's going on up the third floor, and then here is the end elevation. It has a repurposed window that is a heritage piece that we would fit out with a very, very subtle keyed pattern around the window. As is true in the entire party for all of the buildings, we are suggesting very subtle, regionally derived stucco with the first, the first level shown in timber and wood. There are the other elevations that show one hundred and seventy-seven square feet of relief that we're seeking on the east and the eighteen square feet that we are seeking relief for on the south of the main building. Here's new building plans for the gatehouse building. You see parking, or the boathouse building, excuse me, you see parking below, and you can see that there is one room above that has a deck that we think is, we've done our best to sort of break down the scale of the fact that we need to park cars underneath it, and, but we also liked the sort of wharf-like expression of that, so leaned into that and created something that, that is derived from wharf elements. And that's it, and I'll turn it over now to the Merrill team.
Good evening. My name's Caroline Reese from Merrill Engineers. May I share the screen? No, thank you. Okay. Can everyone see a site plan?
Yes.
Terrific. We submitted, Merrill Engineers submitted a large site plan set, a ten-page set with a lot of details in it, but I will focus primarily on the existing and proposed conditions and open it for questions. This sheet shows the existing conditions. The red line would be the erosion control barrier. But what you see here are the four existing buildings shaded with a gray boundary. The area of the Marine Rail that will be filled and the existing retaining wall will be connected across the fill area to hold back the area, and the existing parking, the shed to be removed. A lot of details and outlines on this sheet. If okay, I'll jump ahead to the proposed conditions, which I think provides a little more technical detail to what the Karina and Susan proposed. We can see the four buildings here. I'll make it bigger. I don't know if you can read this. The two inn buildings, as described, will be elevated to a first floor elevation of twelve to be flood compliant. They'll be raised on the existing piles. The gatehouse building is here that will be modified minorly. And as Adam mentioned, because we're just making minor modifications, it won't be made flood compliant, but flood vents will be added. Over here in gray is the outline of the proposed new building with the parking underneath. And that the parking slab is at about elevation nine-three. It's at elevation nine-three with living space above. So that will be flood compliant. You can see here in the solid gray hatch, this is the captain's walk that's going to provide the public access. That, as Eman said, continues from the previous project and provides access along the waterfront. It's ten foot wide. There's a where the connects to the existing decking over here. There's a handicap ramp and some stairs to match the elevation. That's about elevation nine on this end. There are nine, nine by five by twenty-foot parking spaces. One is ADA compliance here with the ramp and there's smooth access and handicap ramp or ADA compliant ramp leading to the main inn. We have some proposed plantings, approximately five hundred and fifty square feet between these two parking areas and about additional two hundred plantings between the ADA ramp. We have a one-way right-of-way proposed where you would enter the property from Border Street here, following the arrows, circle around and come out over here. It's twenty-four foot wide. We proposed a one-foot a one-way access just for better maneuverability on a tight site. And let's see, so we're raising the ground elevation to kind of match the slab at nine-three in areas. I can show you a grading plan with some spot shots, elevating the grading up to two feet and filling that existing marine rail area up to the retaining wall that we're proposing here. I believe the total fill on site is about nine hundred and fifty cubic yards. And then we have a utility plan. We are proposing to work with the utility companies to bury all utilities from Border Street. This is kind of hard to read at this detail, but our our plan is to bury all utilities accessing the site and there is an existing crosswalk that we are moving slightly about nine feet. It won't interfere with the driveway across the street. It's here. We just moved it easterly about nine feet and are adding ADA compliant ramping to connect to the sidewalk across Border Street. And I guess with that, I can return it for questions?
I I would have one piece, Caroline, which we didn't get to mention earlier too, which is subtle, but I think significant is the onsite loading versus off-street loading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's important for the board to see that too.
I agree. I'm sorry. So we have an onsite loading area right here before the first parking spot. It's not considered a parking spot. And as you'll see currently, oh, I'm on the, I'm sorry. Current existing conditions, which I think I just lost, the onsite loading is along Border Street here. I think I just lost my plan, but you can see it on this plan. The existing loading is along Border Street, which in a traffic deterrent. We're moving it onsite to keep all
Right.
loading onsite. Thank you.
No, of course. I mean, I think that's kind of what I was trying to touch on in in the midst of this sea of lines. Stare at and you know, it's also important, you know, there's the VEA A E V E line. There's so many other important lines, but fitting this puzzle into that, but there's also tangible elements that we heard from a butters, neighbors, pedestrians. And the loading zone is obviously off-site. Now it's it's not ideal. And we wanted to solve that right away, but that also then frees up potentially a bike path that can go up Border Street and when you're cognizant of residents and and the the youth biking to the sailing center. So in addition to captain's walk and the objectives there and access into the site, which doesn't exist, and then creating the sustainable buildings, one that's velocity compliant, there's just actual daily tangible moves we wanted to make that were better for the street and for the pedestrian. So this, this, this is the engineering drawing and all of this is what bore all of our planning.
Good, thank you. Hi, Adam, is there anything further that you wish to add or your team?
No, Chairman Morrison, I'm sure many questions.
All right, let's let's first go to the board. Who would like to begin?
I'll I'll start off if
Okay.
I you go back to the nine or eight parking space diagram that you had just
I am so sorry. I just accidentally shut it. So let me get right here. Here we go. And I'll zoom in.
I would just ask you space number five is going to have to access both going in and I suppose backing out onto the pavers, right? The cobble cobble paving?
Yes, that is a seamless part of the road. Yes, that's not a walkway. That is drive. Just kind of changing the appearance, but this is, this is, this would be roadway.
Okay, now another question is really for to clarify in my mind, not a challenge. The Eastwick Inn piece, that that structure is the one that really increases both its facade and volume in the setback. Is that because it's being moved or separated from what's now the manian? I mean, they're they're somewhat contiguous or not. What what's driving that?
No, I'd say I think the architects may speak better to it, but the buildings are simply being raised in their existing footprint. I don't think so. You're seeing, I believe, the elevation increase of the building. They're not footprints not changing.
Yeah, I don't know, but but not volume. I don't see how volume unless you're you're counting the three-foot or four-foot piece underneath the the building itself. You're counting that as a sort of a nonconforming volume?
Sorry, I should turn that on.
Sorry, Caroline. I'll just I'll touch on that. The main inn and the Eastwick Inn. Nothing changes in its volume other than being raised in height. And we're extending the existing concrete piers to support the the raised existing building and we're merely reskinning it. No additions are going on to the two buildings.
Okay, so it's it's the raising that that adds the volume and facade area in the setback. Correct?
Right.
Okay. A request for information would be that I would have, I I'd like to see as we quite frequently request the components of lot coverage. In other words, the proposed cobble paving, the proposed retaining wall, so on and so forth, all those elements in a in just a tabular form, so we can, so I can understand at least you know, what what the coverage is. I think it's admirable that the coverage is is being decreased in many respects, but you've got a lot of impervious captain's walk and things of that sort. I'd just like to check that if you don't mind.
Sure, I can get that to you. Just in summary, I believe from conservation, we're decreasing impervious area about twenty-one hundred square feet. And I think the developed lot areas, just a little over thirteen thousand square feet. But the captain's walk is over land. Correct me, that will be pervious to the land below. This decking is pervious. It's it's pier and decking. Impervious area, just in summary, we'll get you those numbers, would be the four buildings and really the parking area in white, correct? And and this, we're considering this cobble drive impervious.
Okay, but you raise a very good point. If if some of these elements are pervious and wouldn't count towards lot coverage. And I couldn't tell from looking at the that that particular fact. I've got one, well, it's not so small, unfortunately. I think you're short in parking. And the reason I say that is if if you go to section seven point one C where that encompasses hotels and motels, one space for each sleeping room, you've done that fine. You've actually added another bedroom for you say permanent, so that's probably a sleeping area as well. The gatehouse, will the manager or the gatekeeper be resident there? Yeah, okay, so that that's fine. You've got one per each. But there's also a footnote under section C and D of that, which says that you have to have one parking space for each of four employees as measured on the largest shift. Now, you can't run a hotel without front people at the counter and people in the back and managers and probably landscapers as well as housekeeping. So I don't know what the greatest shift is, but it seems to me you've got to at least add another parking space, if not two. But but correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, let me just touch on that. And then, Adam, you can talk about how we looked at the code, but the eight rooms have eight spaces and then we have an additional space for employee. And the way we've set this hotel up and we've got a lot of experience with hospitality development. An eight-room hotel, of course, is quite small. Really is more an inn. And the employee that is at the gatehouse will also be the manager of the the water component, the pier and the float. And we envision this to be managed by that one individual. And then any kind of other outsourcing we would do with vendors, but we're not staffing. This is not a heavily staffed operation. We we think that what we have, although we read the code, was one, one parking space per room, so eight on eight, and then the additional one for employee.
And then, well, how do you deal with that? Basically, a footnote, one space for each four employees on the largest shift, whether they're contract workers or salaried or some other way, they are being employed by the by the inn.
I guess I think because we don't, we don't envision four employees.
You'd never have more than, you'd never have four employees on site.
No, not on a property like this. No way.
So I could add add housekeeping, management inside, checking in, checking out, that kind of thing, but they wouldn't, they would never total four?
No. That's not how we've underwritten the staffing and the organization of the property. No.
You you may have, you may have that as a condition that you can never have more, but it doesn't I think if you're offering, I think if you're offering boutique amenities and and an atmosphere to have no employees on site or one or two employees seems maybe too sparse to me.
Well, the way we envision it, Woody, and we've again done, you know, hundreds of hotel rooms and different projects and different kinds of product. These are, you know, again, so few rooms. And that the way they're set up, we also are, you know, we can't tip into a restaurant model. Of course, and you know, Coasette Wharf, we had that whole parking matrix, which was seats and uses and time and days, and we're trying to focus on a very you know, and this is a very different situation with one use and we we don't, though, though the hotel is public by nature, which is a wonderful thing about hotels. You know, you can rent a room, you can come in, you can, you can visit, you can sit. There isn't a public restaurant and that's where we we're trying to contain this use to limit that activity. And these and these rooms are going to be you know, automated check-in and very, you know, self self-sufficient spaces in the rooms themselves. And then we want to have that that employee be able to run point on a number of roles in a classic inn model. You know, you 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 check in and the same same person's there, the same person that might tell you where you find your coffee. So
Would there be a person who could help me with my luggage?
We we've, we envisioned the the one, the one full-time employee.
Will will do be a jack-of-all-trades.
Jack-of-all-trades, exactly.
Okay.
That's how we will, that's how we've organized the management of the property in terms of how we've envisioned the way it operates. And then that's, that's therefore why we say the one employee, so we have the one space and then we have the one space per each room. And so what we tried to do as you know, Woody, because this is super important, we wanted to make sure that in our mind, we conform with parking and we believe we do based on the way, the number of rooms and also the way we're going to staff the property.
Okay, you wouldn't mind seeing that as a condition, I suppose.
Probably, you know, we we can look at that and whatever, whatever we think works. We want it to operate properly.
Yeah, well, you'd have to be willing to accept that as a stipulation, but also I think you have no plans, you said, to have a restaurant here. What about a bar?
The 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 property will have facilities. There are, there are kitchenettes in some of the rooms. There is a common kitchen and a common living room. Those are going to be facilities that are going to be available to the guests of the hotel.
More on a, more on a BYO basis than a
Yeah.
A food service.
That's right.
Model, okay.
That's right. You know, and if if you have a friend who's a guest here and you're visiting them, you can maybe enjoy those, you can, you know, use those facilities, but the idea is a guest will be able to bring provisions, bring supplies and utilize facilities and there is not a public restaurant.
Okay. Or 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 public bar for that matter. It's
Are dedicated to the hotel guests and the hotel itself.
Right, okay, so as a condition. I mean, that's, that would just get you away from worrying about parking.
Right.
If you would accept that stipule, those stipulations.
I think we could look at that with Adam.
What I've got.
Do you want to ask that, Woody?
Yeah.
Okay. Who else would like to ask questions?
Just looking at my list, I I kind of echoed Woody's sanity check, if you will, if if one person was what was appropriate for the operations of the hotel, obviously. If you have a, if you have a similar facility that operates like this, it might be good to know about with that short of a staff. But I think my first comment, I think the the plan itself overall, you know, is a good-looking plan. My hesitations were with the parking, but I know we're kind of working together on trying to get a solution on that like we did on the last time. If I understand the parking six, seven, eight and nine. Those spaces still still pull out and exit the the half-moon driveway, if you will, right? There's not, one of the rendering at the beginning almost appeared that there was a garage underneath it that kind of came out onto the sidewalk, but that's that's not the case, right?
So, Mr. Watson, we we should have made clear that the rendering is just that. It's an artistic depiction. It's not exact to the project plans. And so there are obvious, I don't want to call them errors, but interpretations that aren't consistent. The project will be constructed in accordance with the architectural and site plans.
Okay. Yeah, because as you, as everyone knows, the the especially the cyclist safety there on on Border Street on sidewalk is is a concern and I would just be concerned about the distance from the building to the sidewalk if there were cars exiting there. If I understood the means and methods on the elevation of the you know, main inn and the Eastwick Inn. That's simply a raising of the existing structure, but the means and methods like pretty much just jacking the structure and, you know, kind of extending the piers. Extending the piers.
Yep.
Okay. And then with the parking and it probably becomes more of a conservation issue, but with the kind of elevation of fill and the potential, um. You know, diversion of water. Uh, is that, that's something. You have a, I mean, it's probably again more appropriate for Concon, but the. The site plan that you have will address kind of the the management of any. Uh, diversion or kind of. I I'm familiar with a project that was done recently where the elevation. Of a parking lot was brought up and it's creating um. Diversion of water onto. Other people's property, so. I just want to make sure that we have a plan in place for for that, or at least an analysis that's been done.
I I should note that um, um, if we're diverting any water, it's into other open areas because there is no structure. To either the west or the east, and by elevating this site, it will be protective of the residential structure. On the south side of Border Street, because we prevent in inland flooding. So we think that overall it's it's a protective measure both for the property. As well as for the residents across the street.
Mm hmm.
But we will, we will specifically address that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I can see why.
I had one, one question on the part, I'm sorry, Matt, have you done, have you done, finished?
Yeah, I think that's mostly all I have.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I have one quick question on the uh, egress on the driveway. It it looks to me like. There's. Between the Cabo and the Captain's Walk, there's pretty clear sightline. From the exit down. Along the sidewalk. Um. With the possible exception of a car parked in number nine.
Uh, you're wondering about uh, visibility as you pull onto Border Street?
Yep.
Okay, well, one um aspect I think that will help address that is that this drive is twenty-four feet wide, um. Basically like a parking spot, so with one car coming out and one-way egress, I think. You know, the the edge of Border Street's actually down here, we kind of pull forward, but. Having that wide width, I think helps open up your your um. Visibility to traffic coming from either direction, um. We made that uh. Turnaround wide, just to kind of provide room to maneuver and room.
Yeah, I I'm less concerned about the traffic than I am about the sidewalk, you know, pedestrians and bicycles. It looks like to the left, there's plenty of of clear sightline. To the right, there would be except for parking space number nine, and I'm not. Not sure that that's an issue, I just.
Oh, I see, yeah, the sidewalk is is down. Here along the street beyond nine, I guess you're you're wondering if you can see a round car.
Yes, exactly.
Gotcha, um. Again, hopefully a car can pull, we can look at that a little more, I think.
And Chair McMorris, the planning board has retained Weston and Sampson to peer review the project. And traffic is going to be one of those issues that will be addressed.
Okay, but obviously. Safety is one of the issues that we need to look at as part of our review as well.
Yes, sir, I'm not suggesting that that it's not a concern, I just wanted to let you know that there'll be additional information forthcoming as part of that. Peer review, and we recognize this is an important and busy. Portion of the harbor particularly during the summer months.
Hmm, thank you.
But I just wanted to mention that again, David, we we totally agree, and I, in fact, I live on Border Street. And. The this, the strategy of moving the loading, which ties into this parking puzzle again. You know, we, the the car loading can free up a spot, moving the loading out starts to, then enables. That bike lane to be a reality.
Mm hmm.
And, you know, ideally, you're on har, you're on Captain's Walk on the harbor side. And you can cross at the crosswalk, but you could continue with the bike path over Border Street, which brings you into Government Island. Into the Sailing Center and a safer route. Then crossing at the crosswalk, going over, then crossing again at the Border Street Bridge, which is rarely where there's the risk. So it's sort of like a set of pieces that start to fall into place if by removing the off-street loading where it says be border. Right there. That starts to enable much more safe uh, passage pedestrian and bicycle.
Right, I I can see that.
Yeah, and so that, you know, and I think you make a good point about sightlines, that's a, is a pretty broad sightline in both directions, thankfully. But. You know. I entirely agree, and in addition, I mean, looking at this drawing, it's just there's so much. You know, more with the Captain's Walk and the openness and the accessibilities, but. We can achieve, we're going to try to achieve everything and fit within all these lines. And one of those really is a better. Safer passage and safer access.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to the safety concern is that the existing boat house and the existing fence. Well. Right now currently creates a really unsafe condition, but now that the new building will be in place, beating the, you know, uh. Required setbacks and the fence gone will will certainly provide a better sightline for the.
Yeah, no, uh, I'm sorry, that's not right. I will get you, yeah.
ED.
Yeah. There we go.
Any other members of the board have questions? Back here, I can't. Ah, there we go. Michael? We.
I'm just amazed that one person's going to be able to clean nine rooms and make breakfast, um, that is. What I'm marveling at, uh, so. That's a. That's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, how could a person who's who's sort of the dock master, if you will. And a check-in person also be doing cleaning all the rooms?
And making breakfast in the.
Making breakfast, doesn't.
I don't.
You have a model, I mean, we ought to be able to.
We don't, we don't intend to operate it the way that, the way that you're that, the way you're describing it. Um, the idea is that there's a common kitchen. And the guests can use that kitchen.
Are the guests going to change the lemons?
And and I didn't get to that quite yet. The guest rooms have kitchenettes and they can prepare in their own room, and that's part of this whole positioning of the site. To reduce overhead and to have a a sustainable or a, you know, a product that someone can enjoy for. You know, with their family and be able to feed themselves and take and use, use the facilities, but. Not have to rely on staff. The cleaning will likely be outsourced, which is why we have a loading zone and within the gatehouse is where we keep our trash receptacles. So, I mean, you'll likely have, obviously. In each turn. You know, a cleaning of the rooms or it's whether it's a daily clean as well, but the idea is that the one person who is the keeper of the property. Um, is not necessarily doing the, is not doing the cleaning, they're managing the property. And we 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 could show you how we've organized the staffing model, but um. It's really about how we're trying to position the property so that guests can come and they can be self-sufficient.
And Mr. Che, we'll provide you with a written. Explanation of the staffing and make it more clear to the board that this is not going to be your your typical. Hotel operation.
Terrific, I mean, I look, I look forward to that, I I think it's, it's interesting, I just haven't seen that model before.
What, what I'm also thinking about is all the food deliveries that are going to take place, all the Uber Eats and all of the um. All the. What is considered, so I mean, those people are going to be coming in and out all day and night, dropping off food deliveries for people.
Ms. Doris, we do have a loading space, so.
So, okay.
Well, I think I saw a reference in maybe the letter that you had written about a. A pre-approved dock, but was it? That's at an adjacent location, right, or is that's not part of this proposal, or?
So, Mr. Watkins, there was a dock uh, which was licensed, at least licensed with the state, but not constructed. And we're just showing it as a point of information, we're not seeking authorization for that structure. On that, that's something that hopefully will come back to the town as well as the state to permit.
Right, because whatever was uh. Permitted earlier, uh, that that use. Has expired, I mean.
Um, but. It it just, they didn't construct that dock, we just, we just, it's a point of information. Ideally, we would like to have a a pier um, and uh, uh, an ability to 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 more boats. Or a boat, I should say.
Yeah, the only reason I raised it is, you know, one of our few triggers on the docks is that it's for private use. Not for commercial use.
Meaning that you would want the dock. To at this location to be for private use and not for commercial use, is that what you're saying?
In order for, yeah, my understanding, David, if I'm wrong, let me know, but I mean, from what I've seen on the docks, it's um. You know, we we permit private, private, the private use of docks is a, is a trigger for us to have to approve. You know, they have to be for private use only in order for the ZBA to approve them.
Well, I think as Adam said, that that previously. Planned, engineered and approved dock. That had its license prior was never built, we've looked at that exact footprint. Um. And that would be done separately. In a different application.
Right, it'd be a new application, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, no, just what we're intending to do is, I mean, Carlos. Peña at Foth did the previous engineering, we 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 basically would, we wouldn't change it at all as the approach, because that was approved by the state previously. So then we'll look at that and then that's a, that's a, to follow.
Yes. All right. Charlie? Anything?
We had a lot of plans shown us, I see nine parking places, but I thought on one of the plans, uh, there were fifteen uh, hotel rooms. Is it, is it only nine?
It's eight hotel rooms, Mr. Dickinson.
I I think, Adam, one of the confusing um, elements is is that. Uh, non-bedrooms. Were also assigned a number, so you you got to number nineteen on that deck bedroom. But there were lots of other rooms, I make this up, but. Room number eleven or or twelve or thirteen wasn't a bedroom. So. You know, at first glance, you would think these were all bedrooms, but I think that's where Charlie got.
Susan and Corinna to address that, that, yes, sir.
Yep, I I would just add, we 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 reverse engineered it, of course, once we knew what our parking could be. Once we've got Captain's Walk, we've got our setbacks in. Proper dimensions of the parking. Um, you know, there's eight spaces, we created eight rooms. So we only have eight guest rooms. We then have common areas. You know, the main inn's got some common area on the ground floor. There's no, there's no ground floor uses in the new building because it's velocity compliant, so. Um, we 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 could look through those plans again and make sure they're labeled properly if it's confusing, but. We we would have, we would have eight actual guest rooms in the property.
Right, the the exist, the other rooms uh, include utility rooms. And common spaces, mechanical rooms.
There there might have been a better labeling system, but we don't bog things down here with that, I mean.
Okay.
I think we can accept.
We'll look at that, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Charlie? All right, um, Michael?
Uh, no, I've 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 um. Uh, uh, been interested by the discussion, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, I know that we have. A lot of participants, a lot of people in the audience. Um. And just check in now, see who might raise their hand and have questions. Uh, I would just ask, we have a fairly. Full agenda tonight. I, um, so if it's possible, that would be helpful.
So I see that John Helen has his hand raised, John?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, if that's okay. Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah, uh, one, I just. Just wanted the applicants to be aware. Just wanted the applicants to be aware. I got a little bit of echo, but um, we might have a flood play change coming in cold, so that might be higher, so they might want to consider that. So that might be higher, so they might want to consider that.
Hmm.
And and then just a vehicle barriers. And then just a. Uh, around the property. He goes anywhere. Uh, around the property. And then in addition, is there an elevator or? Elevator or?
Hmm. Um, we are providing um, our extensible room in the East Inn, which is. Access through a uh. Ramp.
Access through a. Ramp.
So we're not required. We we meet the threshold, not needing to provide an elevator.
Provide an elevator.
Three floors.
Yeah. Anyone else in the audience with their hand up?
I have another question, what is the actual height uh, of uh? They've indicated that they're not conforming with the height, but I didn't see the figure.
Not conforming with the height, but I didn't see the figure.
Hmm.
Susan or Corina, do you want to? Take the screen back to Sha?
Yeah, please, yes, thank you.
Bring back to Sha? Internet, please, yes.
Can everyone see the main inn?
Yes.
Yes.
So. Right now, the the existing main inn height.
There's forty-two.
No. This line represents. Thirty. Thirty-six. Feet in in ten inches. This is what we're proposing. This red line represents thirty-five feet from the pre-construction grade. So this is.
Your application shows. Your application shows an existing heights of. Forty-two and plus or minus thirty-seven. And proposed heights of forty-five point six and plus or minus forty. But I don't see how that corresponds to the drawings.
Um, I'm sorry, David, which building were you referring to? I'm sorry, David. Which building were you referring?
I don't know, I'm looking at the application and it doesn't specify the buildings. It just indicates that the building height, existing building heights are forty-two. And thirty-seven plus or minus, and the proposed building heights are forty-five. Point six and forty plus or minus.
Yeah, this, this, this drawing is existing. So it complies with what David's saying and what you've said.
Yes, this is an existing drawing. And it shows the elevation height. Survey height of forty-two, correct.
Forty. Okay.
And then. If we go to and then propose.
Go to. Propose.
I'm just going to add three, right?
A a little less.
Like two.
A little less. Then the. We're proposing to go to forty-five, six.
We're proposing to go to forty-five, six.
Yeah.
And John, was your comment that it might have to go?
It has to, has to comply with the current regulations, you know, the. FEMA regulations, it doesn't. But I think, John, what you're saying is the FEMA may be having a different, you're showing a different elevation soon.
John, you're referring to the. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that was Charlie.
I don't know, I'm not. John, you were suggesting that the the elevations may change with FEMA?
Yes, I think in the new. And the only other question I had, the only other question I had. What was the, I think it's the east building, do they need relief where it it's actually in the the town layout? That one corner over the the bound to. The, I think it's the East Gate building. Uh, the portion that's over the the lot line.
Gatehouse.
Gatehouse, excuse me.
Yes.
So that that just might want to be included in your relief.
Mr. Helen, this is Adam Brodsky, and forgive me, I'm having some difficulty hearing. We seem to have some interference. Uh, but that's an existing condition. Uh, we're not changing that condition. So I I can't speak to the historic circumstances why the building is over the lot line. Um, but we're not changing any aspect of that condition.
Yeah, but I think they're working on that facade too, so they've got to bring that section that they're working on. To the current codes as far as overhangs and fire protection. So tha- that's the kind of what I'm getting at.
Yes. Right, these are going to be stucked buildings. And they would, anything that requires any um. Fire protection, we would have that as part of the details.
And if it, if that requires coming further out into the setback, we're going to need to see that too.
Well, well, it's that close to we can't every, any overhangs in setbacks. Or windows, I think. You might have to check on that, check on that. That's, that's, that was my question just going forward.
All right. I think I saw George McGoldrick had a hand up in the. Audience.
Yes, he is being promoted to panelists now.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
Uh, Mr. Chairman George. George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street.
Okay, go ahead, George.
Uh, so I'm wearing a number of different hats in this conversation. The president of the Gulf Association. Which is adjacent to this property where it starts. Uh, I own a piece of land to the west of this property. And I live two hundred yards away from it. So very interested in what the board does for this. I'm actually quite interested in uh, hearing that there seems to be. I would say. Approval for something like this, because this property sat, it sat vacant for over twenty years. Since Mr. Rory tried to do something under the gun. And as much as I have a problem with this developer, because he didn't let us open the old salt house. I do think this is a great use for the property. So. A couple of things, the eight rooms, we have a fifteen room in at the Red Lion. And we basically run it with one person. We do have a cleaning service that comes in, but that's for a couple hours a day. So you you can run an eight-room in with with one person doing pretty much everything. Um, like I said, we've been, we've owned the red line for six years and we have one person at the front desk twenty-four seven. And they do everything. They. Take people's luggage, they make breakfast for everyone, they go across the street and do French memories and things, so. It can run with one person on site. And as to the cleaning, someone comes in for a couple hours, they could park out on the street. The issue that Mr. Helen just brought up about the property lines, if you look at the plan that's there. My property actually goes more than halfway into the sidewalk. And I think the existing building that they have does the same. So I would, I would suggest as part of this process, we clean all of that up. And somehow figure out how to get the property lines to run with the sidewalks. And the actual property, because I don't need, I want the sidewalk, I could close it off obviously as an owner, but I don't want to do that. And I I do believe that. Enabling a bike lane on the, what would be the north side of Border Street. Is the safest for all the kids going to sailing clubs, so I appreciate that. My last question was going to be regarding the dock, because. I do have approvals to build out my dock next door, and I want to make sure that if they do anything. Uh, that I still have access to mine, but since that's not part of this approval, we can bring that up later on, but I mean, overall. Overall, as part of the Gulf Association, um, we think this is a good use for this property.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else in the audience or anyone else on the board for the comment? All right. Mr. Brodsky, thank you for everything. Very clarifying and comprehensive. So. Chair Rick Morris, we obviously would request a continuance to your next hearing. I don't know when that hearing date is. Um, let's see. Julian? October first?
Yes, October first is the next hearing.
All right, I move that we continue this application until. Granted, hearing until October first. Or second?
Second.
Woody Chidick?
Hi.
Lee Darst?
Hi.
Michael Dickey?
Hi.
Charlie Higginson?
Hi.
David Morris, I, Matt Watkins?
Die.
All right, unanimous, we'll move this off to October. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. All right, the next application or. Hearing is for a dock special permit at ninety-four Black Horse Lane, lot number one. Our applicant is KD Custom Builders. Um, represented by Campus Hudson Engineering. And this is for installation of a dock on the lot one property out to the Gulf River. Who's with us for that? I, Carmen?
I am. Can you hear me?
Good to see you again.
Thank you, good to see you too. Uh, Nino Di Nuno is also joining me tonight. Nino Di Nuno.
Okay. Get him promoted.
I do not see his name in the attendees. Would it be under a different name?
Uh, perhaps Katie Custom Builders? Uh, no, he's telling me that uh, it should be under him and he's watching the hearing right now. Nino, if you can hear me, can you please raise your hand? Oh, perhaps it's under his wife's name, Sarah? Or, I'm sorry, it's his office manager, Sarah?
Sarah X Y P T R A S?
Yes, I'm reading his notes right now.
All right.
She's being promoted now.
Thank you. She's a he actually tonight. Um, so, good evening. Uh, my name is Carmen Hudson of Campus Hudson Engineering. As, well, Nino will be coming up soon, but uh, I represent Mr. Di Nuno. Uh, as a member of KD Custom Builders, uh, the owner of the property at ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Uh, if I may share the screen so that I can use the plan. All right, can everyone see this plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so. The locust is located at ninety-four Black Horse Lane, however, ninety-four Black Horse Lane was. Uh, subdivided last year. And one of the lots, which is lot one. At uh, which is was part of ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Um, has been completely developed. That is where the existing dwelling is located. And that is where the proposed, uh, the dock is proposed. The, the backyard of the the property at lot one. Uh, consists of lawn and there are large areas of exposed ledge. There is a stone wall that divides the backyard from the salt marsh that is closer to the Gulf River. And beyond that, there is tidal flats. Uh, if I may share this aerial. Which was, uh, actually submitted earlier today. Uh, as you can see, this is the Gulf River. The channel of the river actually is close to the eastern side of the river here. And then it crosses and goes to towards the western side of the river. This is where we are proposing the dock. And as you can see, it, the float will bottom out every day. Uh, it's still over a hundred and fifty fifty feet away from the channel itself. Um, so. Mr. Di Nuno has submitted a special permit, uh, requesting permission to build a two hundred and forty-one foot long pier. It will be forty, uh, four feet in width, uh, with a small section, six by eight at the very end of the pier. Uh, three foot wide by twenty-four foot in length, uh, structural gangway is being proposed and a twelve by twenty foot float. The portion of the dock that will be closest to the site property boundary is the float at a distance of twenty-nine point two feet away. The DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers now requires that. Um, a dock, uh, that is a pier is, uh, the. The bottom of the stringers right here is located at least one and a half times the width of the pier. From the salt marsh. Therefore, for a four-foot wide pier, the bottom of the stringers. Have to be at least six feet from the salt marsh. So as you can see, the the height to the stringers um, will be varying. That the six feet is the the shortest, however. Uh, at the, at the beginning of the tidal flats, that is the highest part of the pier. Uh, to the railings is about, from the tidal flats, is about thirteen point eight feet. Uh, these are three-foot railings as shown, therefore the decking would be ten point eight feet above the tidal flats. So, um, as part of section nine, uh, also it is required that a dock does not, or. Uh, yeah, it would be a a complete dock, does not affect the drainage patterns of the river. Uh, the only portions of the dock of the pier that will be uh. Touching the ground are actually the pilings. There are a total of fifty-seven pilings for the entire dock. The pilings, there will be twenty-six pilings above mean high water. Uh, that will have a total underground footprint of about uh, fifteen feet. And there is a total of thirty-one pilings, uh, seaward of uh, mean high water. That will have a total underground footprint of about seventeen square feet. Uh, as far as water quality is concerned, um, the installation of a dock. Should improve water quality since it will provide safe access to the homeowners from their backyard to the river. Uh, thus, it would prevent them from having to walk over the salt marsh. Uh, with, you know, carrying a kayak or dragging a kayak. Uh, which would help with preventing scouring and sedimentation. Now, um. Yesterday afternoon, uh, Julia was kind enough to forward us a letter that was received by the ZBA. Uh, from the. The Gulf Association. And we submitted a written response with attachments uh, early this afternoon. Uh, however, due to the the timeframe, I would assume that. Uh, many of you may not have seen either the letter or our response. If I may, I would like to go as briefly as possible through the. The suggestions and requests made by the Gulf Association and our response to them for the record.
These are kind of, some of these are questions that sort of, you know, naturally occur. Um, a lot of them are a little more sophisticated and I haven't, I I've seen both. The Gulf River's letter and your response, but I really haven't had time to digest either one.
Okay.
We're going to obviously continue this hearing until October first. And I think it might be, you know, a better use of time if we waited until October first to go through this part of it.
Okay, um.
Let me just check with the other board members and see what they think.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, we've had a policy that material not submitted within seven days of the board meeting won't really be discussed. At that, at that particular session. And for the very reasoning you're talking about, it's, it's. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed that Carmen was able to respond to each. Of their queries, but we've got to look at this and not just get a presentation, but uh. And I have to compare it to the plans and.
Yeah.
See what's what. So I, I. Anybody else have anything they they want to express? Anybody, board members?
I agree.
Let, let's move this along and, you know, we may have some general questions that that come up. I know I have a couple. Um, is there anything else that you want to add about this, this point?
Um, yes, if I may just, um.
I have a question too. Why, I. If that's the policy, why is this letter allowed to be submitted the day of the hearing?
It.
Considered in this hearing?
It's not, it's not being considered in this hearing, that's the whole point. We, if we consider it in at the next hearing, we just need. Material seven days ahead of it, of a hearing date to consider it at that late meeting. And this is pretty, you know, sometimes we relax that if it's a simple thing, but this is pretty complex. So. We will look at both of these and we'll talk about them because they're important. But we won't talk about it tonight.
Okay, uh, if I just, I just would like to go over. Uh, some graphics that I put together, just so when you go, do go through the hearing, I'm sorry, through the letter. At least it would be fresh in your memories.
A little orientation would be useful.
Okay, um, so, let me see, for some reason I cannot see. Uh, okay, so can you see this aerial?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um, so this was a graphic that I included in our response. Uh, early this afternoon, um, just so, uh, in in their letter, the Gulf Association had mentioned a twelve to sixteen foot waterway. That is this channel right here. Uh, I guess they have two, two bridges over there that connected uh, this, this land to Supper Island. Um, the property at ninety-four Black Horse Lane obviously only ends here, twenty-six point two feet away from, or twenty-nine point two feet away from the float. Uh, all of this area is not within the locust property. Uh, this area right here is what the Gulf Association letter refers to as the cove. Um, and uh, so, um, some uh, some concerns, I guess, whereabouts. Uh, water quality, which I already addressed, um, and the distance to mean low water. Um, as you, as you can see on the plan that I submitted, it only goes to elevation zero. Mean low water is actually at elevation minus five, which would occur somewhere here, uh, at the edge of the channel. We also submitted an additional, this is a, a larger existing conditions plan that that shows. We also submitted an additional, this is a, a larger existing conditions plan that, that shows more of the area of the neighborhood and it shows these contours which actually were obtained through soundings that go to elevation minus three. So elevation minus five would only be further into the channel. This is where the, the tidal flats start changing into the channel. So the distance from this side, that is the seaward side of the float to elevation minus three is in excess of a hundred and fifty feet. So the channel is about a hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the float. So that is why the mean low water line hasn't been shown on any plans because it's, is in the channel, which is far away from the float. And then here.
Alright.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go over the, the attachments that were submitted. So this is the, the other, that, that extended existing conditions plan with only the proposed float and the proposed dock added to it with distances. The association had asked for a distance from the southern edge of that channel to the pier and that sixty-eight feet over salt marsh. And to the, we have a distance here to the float as well of a hundred and twenty-six feet. Obviously, the vessels that would be used here, either kayaks or small boats, would be located around the float. So as far as any kind of maneuvering is concerned, there is plenty of distance to that southern edge of that, of that channel. And also regulations require the distance between floats, never mind a waterway, but just between floats of being at least fifty feet. We are well over fifty feet over salt marsh here. And also this I submitted because I was going to use it at this presentation. I just emailed it to Julia before hearing. These were just other docks that were mentioned in my response today that actually go into the tidal flats, the piers themselves, in order to get closer to the channel. So there, that's at least five existing piers that are located in the immediate neighborhood of ninety-four. This is ninety-four Black Horse Lane right here. And as you can see, the reason for that is because here there's a huge distance that consists of tidal flats in order to get to the channel. And, and as you get closer, you don't have to actually extend it as much. But, um, so that now it should be very straightforward when you, when you read the letter and looking at the graphics. Hopefully, if there's any questions from, for any of you that were able to read the letter or regarding the plan itself.
Yeah, I, you know, that last, that last thing that you showed us with all the docs leads me to my first question. How many lots are there at ninety-four?
How many lots? There, there's a total of ninety-four lots that were subdivided.
How many?
Four.
Four, okay.
Oh, no, 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 no.
How many of those, how many of those lots have access to the Gulf River?
Uh, three of those lots have access to the Gulf River.
Alright, because I'm looking at that picture and I know people like to be able to use their kayaks and their paddleboards. Does everyone have to have a dock? It, it seems to me that it would be a lot better for the environment and a lot better for the aesthetics if people could actually share docks. And since you've got three lots that are being developed by the same developer, has any consideration been given to having shared docks? Because I expect that we're going to see a dock application for Lot Two and Lot Three down the road.
Well, I don't know. That would actually be a question for Dino, but I don't believe that you know, you would be constructing everything in every, for every lot, do you?
No, not necessarily. And I think, in fact, one of them has, has to be, right? Carmen, has to be shared.
Okay.
So it's, we're really only, I mean, at max would be talking about three lots with dock access.
So that's three more docks than are there now.
Potentially, I mean, as, as the lots are sold, whoever buys them has the same rights as everybody else with the appropriate furniture on the grid.
Question, this, it seems to me that this would be the time before the lots are sold to try to work something out so that you could have a community dock for the three lots. Because if, you know, once the, once the lots are sold, they're individual lots and there's no way there can, you know, unless the neighbors all get together, which is not all that likely. It doesn't happen. So we'll have three more docks for kayaks and paddleboards. That, and this dock is a hundred, it's, it's a football field and a half long. I don't know if the other docks are gonna end up having to be that long, but that's an enormous amount of artificial material across the salt marshes.
I'm sorry, so just a question. So this, this is just a question. So this, this is, oh, I'm so sorry. I can hear myself. Talking in fact.
We hear you.
Okay, it's just that the application in front of you is and I don't know if we should be discussing.
I understand that. Well, we either discuss it now or we never discuss it and we have three docks, so.
I don't, I don't think it's an
Oliver is here. I think this is probably the only opportunity that we get. I'm sorry.
I, I don't think it's an unreasonable. And I think it, uh, we've had several, you know, people interested in every lots and a few people feel a different way about having their own private access. Comes to the value of the lots themselves, so. Something to, so, think about. Something to think about.
Well, you know, obviously we're gonna continue the hearing until October, so hopefully you can think about it between now and then and have some guidance for us.
Will do.
That's my, my concern. Anyone else on the board have anything they want to add? Alright, how about the audience? Anyone, there's George.
George McGoldrick is gonna be promoted to panelist.
Good evening, George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street. Speaking as the president of the Gulf River Association, and for those of you that don't know, the Gulf River Association is a fifty-year-old group of volunteers that try to ensure to keep the river pure and pristine. We're not against development at all. And so we, and actually support docks. So the letter that we sent was just based on our experience over the last twenty years for those of us on the board in terms of minimizing the damage that, that some docks do. So while the, the photo that Carmen showed of the docks to the south of this project that were out towards the channel, all those docks were built within, were, were built before the last fifteen years. If you looked at a picture of docks that were built in the last five to ten years, when people have been more cognizant of the damage that docks do to the yew grass and stuff, they've all just come to the end of the marsh grass. The seventy-five Border Street is one example. And one of the Black Horse Lanes, Mister, I can't remember the exact number, is another example where they just come to the edge of the marsh and then go out. Those docks don't have access to the channel. Those are the ones that have most recently approved. So I just want the board to recognize that the association is not against building the docks, but the fact that we're trying to minimize the impact of the river by just going to the end of the marsh and not in, well into the river is an important component to us. And lastly, I'd like to just say that I think Chairman's idea of trying to finalize the development up there to one shared dock is a, is a great idea. And I hopefully the developer will seriously consider just doing it once. Save him a lot of issue if I'm coming for you the next two or three times. Thank you.
Anyone else with their hand up? Anyone from the app can't want to add anything? Any board members? Alright.
I guess Dave, the only thing to add, obviously I'm, I'm sensitive to that area too. But you know, I also wanted to be clear that like some of the issues that you look at, even in the letter, which was well-written, are issues that are likely outside of our jurisdiction. So kind of put that out there as far as like my understanding of our jurisdiction is like, is that it extends landward from the mean high water point and you know, we kind of take a look at a couple of these different criteria. So kind of where the dock lands at the end and whatnot is stuff that is probably gonna fall under, you know, DEP Chapter ninety-one, you know, the Concom type of authority in jurisdiction versus us. So I'll just, I'll just add that.
And I'll clarify that encouraging a community dock is far outside our jurisdiction. But. Anyone else? Alright, can I have a motion to continue? Second. Alright, it's been moved in second to continue to October first. All those in favor, Woody Cheg?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Michael Vicki?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins?
Aye.
David Morris?
Aye.
Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Alright, we've continued this to October first. The next one is a special permit.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Uh, the next special permit is thirty-four Summer Street. The applicant is Amy Pruitt. Merrill Engineering is representing Ms. Pruitt. I assume that's Brendan Sullivan?
Yes. Yes, Brendan Sullivan is promoted to panelist.
Yep, good evening. For the record, Brendan Sullivan with Merrill Engineers and Land Sovers. Here with the, I believe the applicants online as well. Amy Pruitt and Chad Pruitt might be on as well. If I could share my screen, I can pull up the site plan. So the, the property is thirty-four Summer Street, north side of Summer Street. Black Horse Lane intersection is just to the south, to the bottom of the page over here. It's across the street from that. The lots in the residential District A. Non-conforming with respect to lot area. Does have the required frontage, doesn't have the required hundred-foot lot width. We're below in the lot coverage and building coverage and building height as well. Building height is approximately twenty-six feet to the peak. It's basically almost like a one and a half-story farmhouse, I suppose you would call it. Front yard setback is conforming, using the average setbacks from the both adjoining properties. We come up with a twelve-foot yard front setback. The existing is twenty-one-point-three. For the right-side setback, I have fourteen-point-two, so just under conforming on the right-hand side, and then we have a two-point-five on the left-hand side. And the proposed addition encompasses mostly the rear of the, of the structure. There's an existing, this, this portion of the structure back here is a, like a three-season room or a screen house. This portion here that shuts out is a, it's only a single-story portion of the, of the dwelling. And that's for the entrance into the main, main portion of the house. There's also a carport in the existing garage on-site as well. And the proposed, what we're thinking of doing was moving the garage, detaching it from the carport, removing the carport and moving the gar, garage further back onto the property to get, get it away from the, the proposed addition. The garage is currently three-point-nine feet off the lot line. We're gonna move it back, move it about almost four and a half feet off the property line, which would make it conforming because we're more than seventy-five feet in setback. It's less than fifteen feet in height. So with that, I actually went out to the site yesterday and what I wasn't aware of is, so the carport, it's a roofed, roofed structure. And there is an access to the front, well, which goes to the garage in the back. And the sides are more or less like a, like, more or less like a slats, open, open walled sides, but it does have a roof. But it is connected to the main dwelling on this corner. And the reason why I say that and importance of that because, because this part of the structure here, you know, it's fourteen-point-two, it is less than fifteen feet in height. So therefore, it makes it conforming zoning-wise. But with the carport being attached to the house and attached to the garage, our side yard setback is now three-point-nine feet, not four-point, not fourteen-point-two. Because it is a roof structure that is connected to the main dwelling. So I believe our right-side setback is now three-point-nine feet, not the fourteen-point-two. So with that being said, I'll roll through the architecturals, so.
Brendan, just on that last comment, but, but the carport is planned to be removed, right?
Yes, yep, we're gonna remove the carport. And we're gonna take the garage and move it back into this, into this push port. And it's part of the lot back here.
So, so Brendan, this is Woody. You're, you're basically taking a non-conforming structure and ma, making the house conforming.
Well, not really.
Because if, if the carports attached presently to the existing dwelling, that's the house setback.
Right, the three-point-nine.
Yeah, and now the house setback is going to be fourteen-two.
Yes, we're gonna, it won't be conforming because this is a one-story, what I call the doghouse as we enter the house. But we're going up another story here, so it's gonna be greater than fifteen feet in height now, proposed.
Okay, certainly an improvement from a setback standpoint.
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I was kind of getting at because before, when I originally saw this, it's like, oh no, we're, we're fourteen-two and this is less than fifteen feet in height. That's a conforming structure and you want to go up a story, that's a variance, but we don't want to do that, of course. So when I went out there, the carport is definitely attached to the main dwelling and the carport is attached to the garage. And so our side dead setback is now three-point-nine, not fourteen-two. And the proposed setback, for the new drawing will be fourteen-two. Because the, the, the carport will be removed and the garage will be moved to the rear portion of the lot. So I am gonna have to revise the table on my plan and actually I'm gonna have to revise some of the architecturals as well. To do some, we did floor areas as far as conforming and non-conforming, but we really didn't do any facade calculations. I think we're gonna be fine with the facade calculations, but I can just run through the plan with you. So this is the front view of the existing. So as I said, this is that main door, the setback. This is what I'm calling the doghouse, which is less than fifteen feet in height. That's where the fourteen-two was measured from. This is the proposed front view. So the main peak stays the same. There's just gonna be a gable end coming off of the end. And then this will be, so this will be on top of the existing door. And the existing proposed structure will be above, will be above that. This is the front view. This is the front view as well, showing the shingles and style. This is the existing right-side elevation. Once again, this is that, what I call the doghouse, which is where the entry is to the rear. We're pushing that, that's the front of the house. The screen portion of the screen porch in the rear of the house. And so the proposed is, like they said, going up into the story in, in, in going over that screen porch in the back. And it's drawn like this, so the, the blue is actually the non-conforming part of the structure because, because the house is skewed a little bit, actually the back corner of this is gonna be conforming. The front corner is gonna be, I think it's about a foot difference, so this is gonna be fourteen-two. The back, the setback in the back of the structure will be fifteen-two or fifteen-three. So that's why only a portion of this is, is non-conforming. Right-side elevation, there's the right-side elevation again, decks off the back. This is the existing rear elevation, showing the screened porch. The proposed rear, showing the dormer off the side. No, I'm sorry, the new dormer off the side, gable end. And there's the rear elevation proposed. Left-side elevation, this is the, a little bit more of the significant elevation, but this is all, this whole part of the structure here is non-conforming. Yeah, all of this, this is all non-conforming right now, even the screen porch is, as well. Yeah, all of this, this is all non-conforming right now, even the screen porch is, as well. Um, and then this is. So this is the. Even though it's shaded in different colors, this, some of this, some of this under here is, um. Existing non-conforming. So even though. It looks like this is a. You know, maybe not half as this, but, um, it, the, the numbers are gonna be, um. I mean, maybe, it may be a thirty percent increase in facade. Um, that's non-conforming. There's the proposed left side elevation. Um, and then the floor plans. And then this is, this is what's existing, this is a proposed non-conforming floor plan. Um, and same for the second floor. So with that, I'll. Take any questions, comments?
You know, I was, uh. I went out to check the site. And, I don't know. Sunday or Monday. About half an hour after Matt did. Um, and it's, that, I think the project is a very. Simple one that'll actually kind of smooth out the lines of the house and make the whole property a little more. Attractive and useful, so I, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess they added that one. I couldn't quite tell with some of those architectural drawings, they maybe looked a little bit more overwhelming to me in size, um. And, and it was a narrow lot, you know, to begin with, but I think when you go out there and look at it, it's kind of like an infill of the back. And there's a few things that, um. You know, on the, on the. Left side there with, it's the closest, uh. Side setback, we're not getting any, any closer, um. To there, which was good, there's an established row of our revities there, which was. Good to see that that won't be touched, and actually the. The relocation of the garage, um, seems to even add a little bit of privacy to the, uh, abutting property on the right hand side. As well, so I think at first I. Was a little uneasy about the narrowness of the lot and. But definitely after seeing the site, um. Similar to David, I, I felt like it was. A reasonable. Proposal. I'd say Brendan probably just, you know, follow up with what the. The calculations are. I saw a few things on those plans, some of them showed that there was like a reduction in. Volume and the setback, which didn't, you know, even. Volume didn't seem right.
I, I saw that as well, so and then, and I apologize, I didn't see that until just the other day, so it was, it was too late to send revised plans, but. Yeah, that's why, that's why I said when I, you know, when I did find that the carport was connected, that it kind of changes everything and. I gotta get some facade calculations on there as well, because I know you guys like to see those, so, um, I'll tighten up those numbers and, uh, make sure they're right.
Okay, that's all I have, comments?
Anyone else on the board? Comments or questions? Okay, um, anyone in the audience like to address things? If someone has a hand up?
Nelson Hall is. Being promoted to panelist.
Okay. And. Uh, you're still. Where did you go? Okay, we can hear you, but we can't see you. So Mr. Hall, you have a comment or question? Doesn't appear that he's muted.
If he wants to put his question in the Q and A, I can read it aloud.
Okay. Right, um, Mr. Hall, we can't hear you. Um, there is a Q and A box. Hopefully, oh, there you are, I can see you now. We, we don't hear you yet, though. You're not muted, so it must just be your microphone's not turned up enough? Yeah, there's a Q and A box down on the bottom, hopefully on the bottom. Of your screen. Uh, you can type in a question or comment there if you wish. No, still can't hear you, um. Can you try maybe join us from a cell phone?
Well, the other option is, since we're gonna continue this to get Brendan's updated information, he could submit his questions. At any time over the next three weeks.
Sure.
And we could deal with it then. I don't know.
Right, let's just, uh, does anyone else have any comments or? Questions, anybody else in the audience? Was a hand raised?
No other questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, I apologize that we can't communicate here, but. We will continue this until October first. Um, you can email Julia at the, at the town. Website, Julia Gillis. And she can. Communicate any questions you have to us. Or comments, okay? Thank you. Um, all right. So. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'd move that we continue this hearing until October first, sir or second?
Second. Second.
All right. Uh, Woody Chittick?
Aye. Aye.
Lee Darst? She's raising her hand. I don't hear you, though.
Aye.
All right, good, Michael, Dickey?
Aye.
Charlie Higginson?
Aye.
Morris, aye, and Matt Watkins.
Aye.
All right. So we've continued that one on, the next hearing is. A used special permit and a special permit for ninety one and ninety five Elm Street. The applicant is Abuwakkar Alzian. And hopefully, he will correct my pronunciation. And it's the. The notice on this particular application. Was for the construction of a mixed use building. Uh, pursuant to three hundred eight point three and three hundred point nine point seven. The plan that we have. Appears to be a three family house. So. Mr. Alzian, if you could unmute yourself and. Activate your camera, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Chairman and, uh, respected board members. First of all, I'm a physician by profession, so I hope nobody will, uh, you know. Take it, uh, in a way, I'm not technical, but I have to present my case. Which I, uh, really, uh, study thoroughly.
Okay, well, I, I hesitate to interrupt, but. Uh, we have a number of problems before we even begin. Uh, your application. Is for a mixed use building. The drawings that you gave us is for a three family home, which are two different things. Um, the application itself. Has, i- is absolutely repeat with errors and omissions and. Doesn't have the, nearly the information that we need to have to even consider this. You also have two lots here that aren't merged. And you're, you're proposing a project across the two lots. Um, which. You know, without the lots being merged, y- you can't do in the first place, and in the second place, there's a lot of. The difficulties and restrictions. Given the changes in the zoning bylaws over the last fifty years or seventy five.
Let me interject if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, what?
Let me interject, I think you are mistaken here. Because under three, let me continue.
I, I spent quite a bit of time with your, with your application, and I'm, I'm.
Let me talk. You, you allowed everybody to talk, let me talk. Right?
And, sir, it's. There's no point in continuing with the hearing. When we have an application, plans and drawings that are all insufficient. All of them.
But you forgot one thing, you keep repeating the same thing, you're not allowing me.
I, I know, but there's no point in going forward.
What no point, you are the one who's making the point.
Listen to me for a minute, there is a public notice for this hearing. For a mixed use building. The plan that you have given us. For the hearing is for a three family home.
No, you're wrong.
Those are two, those are two very, those are two very different things. Okay, let's.
It's not three house. It's two stories and one my office. Why you are mixing up with orange, tell me?
Because, because that's what you gave us.
I gave you and I wrote on the application, that the reason you don't want to hear me. Number one, number two, this is non-conforming under chapter three hundred. Article eight, one to six, the house built in nineteen twenty. Eighty seven built nineteen ten. Anything built before January fifteen nineteen fifty five is non-conforming. So how you are telling me twenty years? Either you don't read what I'm reading, or. Both of us, we have to come back and study.
Yes, and I, I would suggest to you, this.
Don't suggest to me, you have to read those.
All right. The zoning. Laws and regulations are reasonably complex. You're right that you have pre-existing non-conforming building on one of your lots. That gives you certain rights, it doesn't, doesn't give you the rights that you're asking for in your application.
Why, give me, give me the reason so I can take it, take it to the court in Massachusetts, give me the reason.
Before we spend more time on this. There's a choice that you have. You can voluntarily withdraw your application.
No.
And, or, or we will close the hearing and we will vote to deny it with prejudice.
Okay, deny it with prejudice, but I will take you to the court because I am stronger than you.
We can deny it without prejudice and you can come back with a compliant application.
No, you are, you are, I tell you, you are right now biased.
We are not going to have a hearing on this.
I'm telling you, you are biased, if this is recorded, I wanted it to be recorded.
It is, it is.
Because you are violating my rights.
It's, there is a, we have had many, many, many applicants over the years. All of them have been required to comply with the regulations and the rules for filing applications. And notices and plans. All of them. And we're not going to treat you any differently than we have treated every other applicant.
No, you treat me different, I tell you right now, I'm treated differently. I'm telling you, you are a biased person.
Well, I, I understand what you're telling me, but that's, that's very unfair of you, but.
No.
You're entitled to your opinion.
I feel I'm in a very unjustified position. Because the way it is, you are coming out with a quick answer, I was waiting two hours to come out to your answer. That's what I was waiting for.
And I, I also understand that you have talked to the people at the planning office. Who are telling employees and are very, very helpful and have tried to help you and have given you a lot of advice that you've ignored. There's, uh, do, let me just take a moment here, our town council is here with us tonight, Carolyn Murray, and perhaps she can offer a little bit.
No, I don't want to hear him now, I'm talking to you, but because I want to ask you a question. Under the law. Under Massachusetts general law, chapter forty eight and chapter three hundred. All right, I read all these things. I am. I have the right as non-conforming structure a lot or not, that's what I'm asking you. Do not tell me about application now, do I have my rights as a citizen, as a resident of the town or not?
Sure you do, you have the exact same place that. You have the exact same rights that every other person.
So why you are denying me, don't give me sweet talk. Let's talk straight, don't take me sweet talk, all right?
Okay.
When you want to talk, talk.
I don't really have any things further to say to you, you can listen to town council or.
No, no, you are the one I'm talking to. I'm not asking a town council right now, that escaped from your responsibility.
We're not having a debate here, okay? You can either listen to what town council.
Okay, send me, send me your refusal, so I'm gonna submit it to the Supreme Court of the state.
Sir, if, if I can interrupt, please.
No, don't interrupt.
You're gonna get some free legal advice.
I am going to interrupt because you are not listening here, quite frankly, and no one is trying to treat you any differently.
No, they treated me, I have.
Sir, if you go on the website. For the Z B A's pending applications and look at every single application that was on before you this evening. You will see completed applications, which.
Oh, what did I, excuse me, what did I submit it?
If I may, sir.
No.
You have not completed the application correctly.
Oh, yeah?
You have not, you have got to identify. How your lots are not currently conforming, we certainly understand lot area, that's one of them. You have not, however, shown us how you plan to situate this building on the plot.
Oh, I did not, right?
You did not, we have no, we have an existing lot plan, but we do not have a plan showing the building.
You are a lawyer, right?
Or what the setbacks are, the zoning board can't grant you relief without having all of those dimensions.
Are you a lawyer or a?
I am the town council for the town of Cohasset, yes.
So this means you know better than me, don't talk to me because you are a lawyer.
Sir. Sir. You are talking very loudly, so I am sorry, but the only way to talk over you is to talk deeply loudly.
This is, this is, this is, hold on, this is just, this is a waste of everybody's time. And it's a waste of the towns.
Send me a letter.
Working in town council and you don't want to listen to them. So I, I would.
Sir, you are being given an option to complete your application so we can actually. Consider the merits. And vote on it and possibly even grant you the relief you were asking. But we need to see your building as you proposed it. Situated on the plan, and if you go back to your engineers, they will absolutely understand. What is necessary for the board to be able to see to evaluate this application.
You know, I need a letter from you and them, why they deny it? Because I have to use that in court of law.
You will, you will get one, but you, I'll give you a choice, I'm giving you a choice first, and just answer this yes or no. Do you want to voluntarily withdraw your application without prejudice?
No.
Okay, then I would move that we deny the application without prejudice.
I need, I need a letter from you.
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Woody Chittick?
Aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Michael Dickey?
Aye.
Charles Higginson?
Aye.
Dave McMorris? Aye, Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Okay, this hearing is closed. So, we have some couple of administrative things to do, and you will get a copy of a written decision. So we don't have any closed hearings to deliberate, right? Actually, I guess we can close that one. I would. Right, I guess we've already done it. Just to make sure that it's clean, I, I move that we close the hearing on ninety one ninety five Elm Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Woody Chittick, aye.
Lee Darst?
Darst, aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Charlie Higginson?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye, Matt Watkins.
Aye.
Okay, and now that the hearing is closed, I would move that we deny the application without prejudice. Sir, a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Woody Chittick, aye.
Lee Darst, aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye. Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Alright, and we'll get him a copy of his decision as soon as possible. Um. Next thing. The minutes from August sixth. Um. Like, did get a chance to.
Could I just interject one little comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Sorry, I, I think you just went straight from zero to sixty way too quickly there.
Yeah. He was, had the opportunity to get some free legal advice and he didn't even take that, so. Alright, um. The minutes. But thank you for trying, um, I appreciate it. Alright, the minutes of August sixth. Uh, ten pages.
It's a lot of typing.
It's a lot of typing.
They're good.
I thought it was very well done. I didn't see any issues. I thought it was, um, everything was summarized accurately and succinctly, but without too much. Too much detail. Um, anyone else have comments?
No, I thought they were accurate. I got a chance to review them and thought they were accurate.
Anyone have any corrections or comments? Alright, I'd move except the minutes of August sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Woody Chidick, aye.
Lee Darst?
Aye.
Mike Dickey?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye. Matt Watkins?
Aye.
Great. So let's move on to the discussion of the rules, regulations, and fee schedule. Is any, if people had a chance to look those over at all?
Really?
Okay, we had a, a lot on our plates for tonight and I know I, I really didn't, I didn't look at them, because.
I think they were all improvements and I presume that we followed a, or these followed a template of sorts. Could somebody enlighten me, or was this Cassandra, were, were these? Created out of whole cloth or were, or did we really apply a template?
I essentially looked at surrounding towns and what they are charging for their filing fees. If I remember correctly, most of what is on there is just taking what situat had. Was the closest neighboring town. And the rules and regulations, I didn't really change much in there, other than a few minor housekeeping details.
Things that you want to see included or don't need to be included, yeah. Attachments or things, yeah. I thought they were fine, but if people want to study this.
Why don't we just roll them over to October first?
Okay.
Alright, um.
Oh, Dave, just to bring up one, one thing too, that, uh, this is about the November meeting, but we have, uh. Uh, Tuesday the fifth, another election, so it just to kind of. Uh, if it gets busy, if, if you want to bring that up to change it.
Yeah, we have to, we can't do a, a meeting on election night, so.
Right, so if you, I don't know if you would pick a date, that's what we're playing.
I think we planned ahead for that and they're scheduled on a different evening.
Okay.
Great. Well, I'm sorry that the. Meeting went difficult at the end, but I thought that most of it went very smoothly and presentations were very good tonight.
Um. Yeah, one, just one quick note too, that I just noticed by the, the attendees, not that it's. To, it's happened before, but I did notice one ma, one media member was on, but only during the eighty-two border street application, so.
I, I've got something to noodle on and maybe we could talk about it on, uh, in October. But I'm increasingly. Uh, getting frustrated with Zoom meetings. And I understand why we're doing Zoom meetings, because we meet the same night as the select board quite frequently. Um, I would be certainly willing, uh, to change Tuesday meetings to some other date. That maybe, um, not create conflict so that we could meet in person. I think with some very complex submissions. And people are fumbling around. I mean, nobody's fault, but it's, it's the technology, you know, they're fumbling around and you see the screen, blah, 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 I can't hear you. Um. I, I would like to consider changing our, our longstanding Tuesday meetings to a date, a, a, a day of the week or the, or, or the week. Where we are not going to run into conflicts with the select board. And then we could have a real live meeting, but.
I, you know, Woody, I, I. Good, for many reasons, I prefer live meetings, but I also am very. Enamored of having a Zoom capacity so that anybody who wants to appear can. Because it's, for a lot of people, it's very difficult to get to town hall or wherever for a live meeting.
I, I would agree with you there, but I would like to think the board could, by and large, attend in person. We're the ones who have to look at the plans and.
Right.
You know, this line and that line and so on and so forth.
Yeah. Well, if we can work out something where we can get the, the hybrid type of meeting, I'd be all for it. Even if it's a different night.
Can our town planner enlighten us at all?
I want to jump in too prematurely there. Um, I think that if you were going to change the night of your meetings, it would make sense. Whereas we're heading into the fall to look into doing that, um, next year. Um, since your twenty twenty-four schedule is already set and then we could just transition for twenty twenty-five to a new date easily. Um, in terms of equipment for a hybrid aspect, I would have to look into what the capacity would be. Um, and what logistics would be involved with that, with applicants showing materials both in person and in a hybrid aspect.
Okay. I think that if we had them live, I think. And, yeah, I guess you're right. I, I was gonna say the applicants would have to appear. And it would just be the audience, um, that would be on Zoom, but.
But they appear by and large before the select board and, and they appear before the planning board, which meets live and.
The planning board does not meet live, um.
Any board does not?
No, they do not. Um.
I stand corrected.
I believe, and perhaps Carolyn, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that we are required to do hybrid at this point still. I think that's what I had heard from Chris, but I don't know if there's a further update since I last heard.
Um. You're not yet, we have until March, actually, um, that we can continue to be fully remote or we can do hybrid or whatever. Um, and of course, you know, as all of these deadlines have approached us over the last four years. Um, they keep getting extended. Um, I, I do know from attending select board meetings at Wilcock Commons. They do have. The ability to have a, a Zoom audience. I can't say that I've been there, however, when. Someone has been trying to display, say, a plan that is physically present in the room and also projected on a screen. I, I haven't seen any kind of setup like that. Um. But it's, it's certainly something that maybe could be explored.
And I think that's where a lot of the concerns are. It's that you want to make sure that application materials are. Easily seen by both people that are in person and people that are virtual as well.
Right.
Perhaps too, we could reach out to some other towns, hang them. Uh, situated, see who's doing, uh, a Zoom or planning board in a hybrid capacity. Uh, that might be, be helpful. At least we get a model out there if someone else is already, already kind of jumped back to.
Figured it out.
Live meeting.
But the, all the ZBA material can be downloaded and, I mean, I'm in. And looked at either prior or during the meetings. If it's referred to, go to this to look at the plans, um, online. And I mean, yeah, it can't be like tonight where they're, you know, have a little pointer going around. You would just be able to. Download the plans and follow what they're saying in person. Um. Just, just talking aloud about the meanings.
Well, as I say, I think we could think about it and then maybe come together and. You know, put on the table pros and cons or. And a con could be it's, it's not possible technologically, but I, I don't know.
Just to follow your point too, Woody, I think there has been some applicants wishing to, you know, to present live as well. Um, um, we have heard, I, or I've heard some of that, uh, from some different representatives, attorneys namely, but. Um, uh, I, I think it's easier for them to communicate that way as well.
Yeah.
You know, Cassandra, I'll give some thought to it because I can think of, um, a couple of other boards that maybe you could contact, like your counterpart in those communities. Where I think they do project on a screen, but then they still have, um, the owl and some other camera capability. For, um, broadcasting. I just don't know if it is always live or is it something that they're recording and they're playing back later? Um, but I'll, I'll think of a few and, and, um, maybe can reach out to them.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm more than happy to reach out to them just to kind of figure out logistics, because that's one of the biggest hurdles that we've been facing with this. Um, so if you have any towns that you could point me to, I can reach out.
I will do that. Thank you.
Um, just one other thing, the, the, um, the last hearing that we had, that are we going to have staff draft a decision?
Uh, I actually just wrote down a note to, uh, have Julie and I draft a decision tomorrow, um, and then Carolyn, if you could give it, uh. Put your eyes on it just to make sure that it's.
Yeah, I think we referenced the fact that he was given an option and the information that was lacking. So that, I can't wait to be in court with him. That'd be great. But at least there'll be somebody who can referee and tell him when he can speak.
Now the, now the real Carolyn comes out.
Okay, um.
David, what is the overall status on drafting decisions? Is it, are we, um?
I think we agreed that this, that Julia and Cassandra would draft the decisions. Uh, we would have somebody on the board, like we use, usually did have somebody designated to do the initial review. And we would all look, you know, all look at them, vote on them, and they get signed by all of us.
Yep. But on these couple that we have pending. Do we have to like appoint a liaison rather than a drafter or?
Um. Anybody want to be the volunteer for eighty-two border?
Uh huh. I, I can volunteer. I mean, we've, we've, we've got a couple of meetings to go.
Right. But just, it's, you know, if you know that you're the one that's going to be reviewing.
Yeah.
A little closer attention to the touchy things.
Well, I did have a problem there. Um, I, I, I made some interpretive errors because I had a hard time following. Some of the plans is drawn and, and, uh. You know, it's twenty-one gigantic sheets of paper that. Were a little different, but I, I'd be happy to do that, I mean.
And the dock? Black Horse Line?
Yeah, I can be assigned on that one.
Our dockmeister.
Yeah, right. It's a little different one than, than that. Uh, and thirty-four Summer Street?
Oh, I can look through that.
Look that, okay.
I mean, last meeting, I think we all had decisions, so we're, you know, no one can say.
Everybody's thought up.
I haven't, uh, I haven't done one in so long, but everybody's in the same thing, because we all did decisions in the last month, so. I will look at thirty-four Summer. And David, you, you're in charge of ninety-one to ninety-five Elm Street.
Thank you very much. Alright. Then, anyone have anything else they want to add or bring up? Then I think we can adjourn.
Quick question on the, I, I know when I was reviewing the regs and we could talk about it next time, but. Um. Like, does it make any sense on these huge plans to almost request them to be like half-size versus full? I'm sure the applicant might. Like it and it's probably only a few times where we need to roll them out to that degree. I just was wondering if it's a win-win if we got like a.
Well, we certainly didn't need them on thirty-four somewhere.
Right.
I mean, that was sort of a no-brainer, um.
I mean, I guess they can submit what they want and we'll, we'll deal with it, but I almost felt like it was kind of a waste for both of us, probably resources for them and us, um. To have these full-size sets. I guess we had two of them this time, which made me think about it.
Yeah, that's true.
You could write it on the application and in your rules and regs that you require half-size and then. Maybe work with the language of like full-size maybe requested as needed.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Good, that, that is good, because I also have the other ones from eighty-two border from, uh, you know, that they submitted July tenth. So I have those here too, so it's quite a bit of, uh, wrapping paper if I want to recycle it.
Wrapping paper, hitting flies out of the air, all good things.
Yeah, so.
Feels so good when you clean out the, you know, all the old stuff and throw it in recycling, so.
It does.
Um. Anybody, anything else or just?
No, it was a very good meeting. Uh, I, David, you did a great job moving everything along and, um, and it was great. It was a good meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, by the way, Tom Callahan was sending little notes saying that, uh, that, uh, you know, he wants, uh, he wants it by, uh, you know, he wants live meetings also, so I, uh.
Whatever Tom wants.
Ah.
Anyway.
You're such a softie, Dave, anyway.
I know, I am. Alright, I move adjourn.
Second.
Woody? A vote?
Woody?
Aye. Woody Chidick, aye.
Lee?
Lee Darst, aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dave McMorris, aye. Matt?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night, Charlie. Good night, Cassandra. Good night, Carolyn.
Good night, Carolyn. Julia?
Have a good night.